Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Kingston zoning board of adjustment. It's our first meeting since last December. We've had no hearings for ten months. And we all may be a little rusty, so please bear with us. We have some outkeeping things first. And I'd like to introduce to you my colleagues on the board. To my far right is Jackie Leoni and Peter Coffin, our vice chair Larry Grebant to immediate right. On the far left here is Richard Johnson and alternate Chuck Hart. On the recording staff are Susan Eyre and our chairman Elliot Lassio. Believe it or not, we have minutes to approve from the December twenty twenty meeting. You have an opportunity to motion to adopt officially.
I'll move that we adopt the minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty with the following corrections. And that is on page two, it says, Mr. Geer noted that rain guard was being added. It's a rain garden that was what was requested and added. So just above the comments, questions of abutters, if you can change guard to garden. And down below where it says, Mr. Coffin said that he appreciated that a rain garden and it's garden also. So those type of corrections, I move that we approve the minutes.
Okay, I couldn't make second thoughts to agree with that. Were the corrections errors or omissions? All those in favor, will you say aye?
Aye.
Those no, ayes added, meaning the minutes are adopted. This is the first meeting since the elections in March. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Coffin, who has rejoined the board. And this, no, it was Mr. Grebant. Were you up this year?
Were you asking me?
I am asking you, and I'm pretty sure it's you. Yes, it was you too, yes.
It was so true, yes.
But we stayed on. We do need to elect a chair and a vice chair. And I'd like to know who would like to serve in those capacities.
Whenever you speak at once.
Yeah, exactly.
Are you still comfortable being chair?
I'm not uncomfortable being chair, but what I will be doing, my term is up in twenty twenty-three, and I will not be sitting there.
Okay, so we're good through?
A year and a half is what we have, basically.
So, and are you still comfortable? I'll move. Can we, do we have to do them separately or?
No, you can do it.
Okay, I'll move that Larry Grebant, the vice chair, and lecturer Lassio is chair. And I guess nobody else had any desire before we, okay. We can take a moment.
We can have the secretary cast one down, and then you can call it a day, it's up to you guys. You all set, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Feel better, I can say no.
No. I tell you now about my not running idea because I'm trying to encourage people at home to get involved, to start coming to some meetings. They might really enjoy it. I've been doing this for twenty years. And, but now that I'm a member of the board of selectmen, it's, there will be conflicts of interest down the road, and I don't want you to be without a sitting and voting member. I may still be participating to give you the select board's opinions on things periodically, but down the road, that's what I anticipate. So that's why I let you guys all know, love you at home. And I'm thinking of Miss Colleen Gaggins, I know you expressed interest in that. So if you're listening, Colleen, give me a call, we'll get you started, even as an alternate for the next year or so, that would be great. Okay, I think we're ready for the first hearing. And let me read the legal notice to you. It's a Summit Distributing LLC, two forty-nine New Hampshire Route one twenty-five in Kingston. Taxman R. Forty, law fifteen. This is a public hearing whereby the applicant seeks a special exception to the terms of Article two oh one, section four E fourteen of the Tonkin Zoning Ordinance and asks that terms be waived to commit a retail motor fuel outlet with a five thousand one hundred square foot convenience store, a quick service restaurant, and five retail fuel dispenser islands, which means ten fueling locations, and three high-speed commercial diesel islands with two fueling locations within the African Protection District Zone B. And would the applicant like to come forward and identify himself, themselves, or self?
Yes, hi, David. My name is honored to be here at the first meeting, meeting in person, thank you.
We had no meetings even remote, so that's.
Right. My name is Tom Frawley, I'm president and owner of Summit Distributing, the applicant. And with me tonight is Nicole Duquette from GPI Greenfield Heatersmith, our consultant, who's going to answer all the top questions and make our presentation. Would you like us to set this up for visibility?
Where you are is fine. The procedure will be, you've made your presentation, tell us why you think we should grant the special exception. I will then open it up to the board for comments and questions. And after that, I'll open it up to the public for any comments and questions. You will have an opportunity to respond accordingly to both the public and the board. And this is not an adversarial situation, it's an educational one. So the more information I'm given and to make an informed decision, the better. There you go. I'd love to take the floor.
All right. So like Tom said, my name's Nicole Duquette from GPI, the project engineer for this project. So, and you are probably familiar with this site. It's a long one twenty-five. On the north side of one twenty-five, driveway across from Marshall Road, you know, the donut system here, where Stepping Out Dance Academy is not too far. So the lot is a two-point-eight acre lot, surrounded by another lot that is also on western state crossing to the north. The lot is in the commercial two district. And it's currently clear except for this little swath of trees right along here. It is, the little bit there is more of a site, but it's one to two hundred and fifty feet away from the property, so we're not within the shoreline protection area on this lot. But we are within the African Protection Zone B, not in A. B, this use would be prohibited. B, we're allowed to request a special permit or a special exception for this use. So there's no way line for that, that A and B limits is quite a distance from here, so it's not like it's really close to this lot. One thing I do want to, before I bring up the proposed plan, one thing I do want to bring up because it's a little bit of a sensitive nature. We did go to, we did get in New Hampshire, we did go to the Natural Heritage Bureau and find, do a finding for endangered species, both plants and animals. What we found is there was no endangered species listed, but there was an endangered plant or endangered or threatened plant that could be in the area. There was records of the Northern Blazing Star within the area. If I could, if I just passed out just the natural heritage, because this is more recent information, is that okay?
Yes, that's fine, I'm sure.
Pass those down. So what that, what that handle shows is just the Natural Heritage Bureau report. You'll see on the first page, you'll see our existing conditions aerial. And to the north of that, you'll see this building here with the driveway on the side and structure closer up. And if you flip to the next page on that, it's the Natural Heritage Bureau. I'm sorry, I double sided it to kind of conserve on paper. You know what? Sorry, I'm looking at yours, and yours was backwards. So the first page is the Natural Heritage Bureau. The last page, flip it all the way around, is the existing conditions. So within that Natural Heritage Bureau report, it shows yellow circled areas. Those areas are where someone has reported occurrences of the Northern Blazing Star. Now, this is a flower that only blooms in August and September, so we're limited to the study time that we can do this. We did have Golden Environmental Services go out there and survey it. They were out there one day to locate general locations of this flower. What they found is that it was in front of the next door neighbor's lot. So this is the area, and then across the street they found some. And they looked within the area that was noted on the Natural Heritage Bureau, and they could not find any in the center of the lot there. By the time that they went out there to generally locate, and they went on the second time to GPS locate those locations, some of them had been dug up. They were along the right of way, they were not in front of our property, they were in front of somebody else's property. Not sure what happened. My best guess is that it's along the right of way, somebody thought it was a pretty flower, they were blooming at the time, maybe wanted them for their gardens, not sure. But it wasn't part, it wasn't done by the owner of this property, it wasn't done by the developer, future developer of this property. It was just something that happened in between our, us having both go out there to locate them and then GPS locate them. They noticed that they were missing. So.
And I had heard that independent of your statement, I.
What's that?
I had heard that there were some flowers were missing, and it was from the previous owner's family who sometimes walked through there.
Yeah.
So that did not, it had nothing to do with the applicant, I just want to get that out there now.
Right.
So that had been duly noted accordingly.
Okay. So I just wanted to bring that up because I just want to make sure that we're very clear about everything that's going on on this property. So moving on to what was proposed. So I want to follow up safely.
One quick question before you move on. By those, that flower being located on the property, does that adversely impact this project in any way? Is there any remediation that would be required?
So if, it's, I did check with this with Golden Environmental, because I'm not an expert on this at all, but I did ask the same questions that you are. Plants are not as protected as animals are at this point in time. So you are allowed to transplant plants to another area. That they'll, you know, what our intentions, if they were found on site, we were going to transplant down to an area that they are supported right now to increase the population of that flower. However, I don't typically dig up a very big hoop all around these flowers, and that wasn't done for this.
And they're all gone now, right?
They're not all gone.
And they're not.
So I think, I think she noted that there was about six to ten.
As opposed to the forty to fifty there was originally?
There was, there was twenty-two originally, and then it went down to fifteen, I believe is the numbers. I'm not exact on those numbers. But there was some, she saw they get holes from. So moving on to the proposed condition, we are proposing a fifty-one hundred square convenience store and quick service restaurant with a drive-through, and five commercial or retail dispenser islands, means ten fueling positions, and three high-speed diesel islands. Now, with the high-speed diesel islands, we have three islands, but there's only two fueling lanes for the trucks because they can be fueled from either side. This is not a truck stop, considered a truck stop. There's only three parking spaces for trucks on this lot and two fueling lanes for this. There's not going to be truck services in this building right now. And we are providing UST tanks for both the retail and the high-speed diesel. As part of this, we do. As part of this, we do need to do a lot line adjustments. Basically, what's going to happen is we're proposing this portion of the land here to kind of square off our lot and exchange this portion of the lot with the thirteen-point-eight acre lot and go to Kingston across from this bad lot to give them frontage for their main parcel. It's probably going to be about a decrease of two acres, so you're looking at about eleven acre parcel. We're doing this for a couple of reasons. One, to get using crossing their frontage for this real lot. And two, because we do need to get a public water supply well on the property. So we are proposing that to the rear of the lot. So basically, everything towards the rear of the lot will be, remain undeveloped. We'll have our well back there, have our septic system back here in this portion. Septic system would be under the twenty-four hundred gallons per day. That is listed in your regulations for the hydrolog, hydrology, the study, the hydrogeology study or geology study. And our drainage will be in several areas around the property. So just bring you back to. Bring you back to this one. Stormwater, very big, very big thing on using gas station lots. We do a lot of, GPI does a lot of gas station lots. And in New Hampshire, this is going to be under the alteration of terrain because it will disturb within a hundred thousand square feet. So DES will be reviewing this as well. Part of DES requirements is that anything from a fueling area, any stormwater, any stormwater, raindrop that hits a fueling area that either dispenses or takes in fuel, so around your tanks, around dispenser islands on both areas, has to go to water quality units, they have to go to, they cannot be infiltrated. They have to go to a line system, whether that's underground closed system or aligned fire retention area, so that it cannot infiltrate into the water right away, into the groundwater right away. So what we're planning to do is taking the stormwater from those areas and placing it in a line detention basin in the front of the property. The other portions of the site, for the driveway, the parking, the buildings, and the canopies themselves, the roof drains from the canopies and the roof drains from the building. And parking that's not associated with the fueling will go into infiltration basins with pretreatment. So pretreatment, we're probably looking at first fence hydrodynamic oil water separators, so that we can separate the sediment and the oil, the floatables, before it goes to a fire retention area where it can be infiltrated into the water, into the groundwater. So we're thinking about having something similar to, rain gardens and fire retention areas are kind of interspersible right now, but when I put her a rain garden, it's more of a planted area within the parking lot. So we have rain gardens in some of our landing areas around the site, and most likely a bigger fire retention area with seven four bay towards the back of the property. Other than that, so that, here, just to give you a scheme of it, we have drainage here in this island, and then this island, and back here. The remainder of the site will remain open space. So just with, we are still working with DOT on aquifer site improvements that are required for this site. We are trying to get a secondary driveway so that we can separate trucks from the regular passenger vehicles. But this site can work without that entrance as well. So it will go whole, you know, it would be opposing if we're without that driveway. Even with that driveway, we're looking at something in the range of twenty-five to thirty percent impervious on this lot, on the new lot. And about ten to fifteen percent of that wouldn't be able to be recharged. So I know the regulation calls, I believe, for twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent impervious max and less to recharge. So we are looking at basically that, that limit, twenty-five to thirty percent with the impervious, and will be recharging more than half our impervious surfaces into the groundwater. The other, less than half, would be going into a line system. So the other thing I do want to mention, kind of the, doesn't really have to do with the aquifer, but just to give you a feeling of what Tom is planning on doing with his property. These canopies in the building, right? Canopies in the building will be constructed to potentially hold solar panels in the future. So he is looking into that kind of green initiative for the building and the canopies where, do have good lighting on that lot. And the other thing is we think two electric vehicle charging stations, or two spots where electric charging vehicle stations will be proposed on that lot. So that funding comes in to New Hampshire for those charging stations. He'll be able to put those on the slot. So we're really looking for the future on this property. The last thing I just want to note, mention is, as part of the package that we originally submitted, it lists all of our safety features on the gas station. I can go over those with you, but if we want to conserve on time, I don't mind not coming over to. And the other thing is, I'm not quite sure how you like the special permit criteria listed. If my brief overview is good, or if you want me to list item by item on the criteria, I can do that as well.
I think for the public's benefit, you really should, because those are the criteria that this board will act on. It's a little different than what we normally do, and it's not like the old special exceptions. It's as it's clearly spelled out in the RSA's, and I have my copy with me too, so that we're going to follow each one individually. So yes, I think it's good that you do review that, because the public is also going to want to know what it is. We can read it, but it's not the same as announcing it.
Yep. Every board is different on that, so I always ask. All right. So, so this is the criteria as listed in the regulations. The proposed use will not detrimentally affect the quality of groundwater contained in the aquifer by directly contributing to pollution or by increasing the long-term susceptibility of the aquifer to potential leaks. A, petroleum storage or fuel equipment pollution prevention. The applicant proposes to install modern fueling components, including double wall underground petroleum storage tanks with double wall piping and pressure rise combined leak detection equipment. The double wall tanks are corrosion-proof fiberglass construction with overfill and spill prevention equipment. And then we refer to the fuel system component safety features in the back. Stormwater management system. The applicant is designing safety and treatment systems in the stormwater system. The stormwater design will consist of deep sum catch basins with oil water separator snouts and oil water separated tanks capable of containing fuel in the unlikely event of a spill. These components will convey the stormwater to a line impervious sediment four bay fire retention area to further pre-treat and treat stormwater runoff from the tank mounts and fuel dispensing areas. Stormwater from the canopies, roof, and paved areas that are not within the fueling area will be collected with deep sum catch basins with oil water separator snouts and conveyed to a sediment four bay and a fire retention, fire retention area capable of infiltration. This system will provide pretreatment and treatment of the stormwater as well as provide groundwater recharge as required for lots within the aquifer protection district. Two, the proposed use will not cause a significant reduction in long-term volume of water contained in the aquifer or in the storage capacity of the aquifer. The applicant has not proposed significant groundwater withdrawals from the aquifer. The stormwater for the majority of the site will be conveyed into a fire retention area capable of infiltration for groundwater recharge. With these systems in place and the lack of high-volume groundwater withdrawals, the applicant's proposed development will not have, will not have caused a significant reduction in the long-term volume of water contained in the aquifer or in the storage capacity of the aquifer. Three, the proposed use complies with all other applicable sections of the article. The proposed development will comply with all other applicable sections of the Aquifer Protection Ordinance. The proposed septic system will be designed to meet all required New Hampshire DES daily loading requirements, nitrate setbacks, as well as the separation to that estimated high-water table as required by Kingston Subsurface Disposal Systems Rules and Regulations for lots within an aquifer protection district. We anticipate that about fifty percent of the impervious surfaces will be directed to a stormwater recharge system. This will allow us to comply with both New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain regulations and the Kingston Aquifer Protection Ordinance. Although the Aquifer Protection Ordinance allows up to sixty percent lot coverage with groundwater recharge, the underlying district, Commercial Zone C two, only allows up to fifty percent impervious lot coverage with groundwater recharge. The applicant's development plan proposes lot coverage as approximately thirty percent, which complies with both regulations. Four, a hydrogeologic study shall be submitted for uses whose septic systems are designed for more than twenty-four hundred gallons per day. In Zone A, a study shall be submitted for any septic system designed for more than two thousand gallons per day. According to New Hampshire DES's flow ratios, the daily proposed flows to the subsurface system will be approximately one thousand one hundred and twenty-five gallons per day. Since this amount is below the twenty-four hundred gallons per day limit, a hydrogeologic study is not required for the ordinance. Five, the zoning board of adjustment may require that the applicant provide data or reports prepared by a qualified hydrogeologist to assess any potential damage to the aquifer that may result from the proposed use. The zoning board of adjustment shall engage such professional assistants as required to adequately evaluate such reports and to evaluate in general the proposed use in light of the above criteria. The applicant is prepared to work with a qualified hydrogeologist engaged by the zoning board of adjustment to assess any potential effects that proposed development might have on the aquifer. However, the applicant further states that the development's model daily flow to the proposed subsurface septic system is approximately fifty percent less than the amount of a daily flow limit requiring the study. So that is the end of the criteria. Just a brief description of the fuel system components and safety features. The possible, each of the dispensers will have the positive limited barriers, and those are the grooves that you see in the concrete around each dispenser. Those are, those are capable of containing a minor spill from the dispensers and any drops that occur. There, on the dispensers, on the dispenser post itself, there's a shear valve. So in case somebody leaves their nozzle in the car and drives away with it, there is a valve in the dispenser that actually shuts that off completely, so that the leak is limited. And in the event that maybe a car runs into a dispenser, there is a shear valve underneath the dispenser as well, so that cuts off any fuel that goes to the dispenser itself. The canopies, both canopies will have fire suppression systems, the dry chemical fire suppression systems in them. Even though it is not required by New Hampshire, Tom has expressed his wish to put those in both the canopies. There are, there are also leak detection systems, so that if the, you know, obviously, the gas station owner doesn't want to lose any gas too, but to prevent for leak too, there is pressure detection system. too, there is pressure detection system, so that they can detect a very minor leak within the pipes themselves. So if there is a leak in the pipe, it is dual-walled, so the second pipe wall would contain the leak if there's a crack in the first wall. Um, but, uh, if that happens, there is a detection system that can detect that and will shut off the system if a leak is detected. On top of that, there is a manual, in case everything else stays, there is a manual switch in, um, behind the cashier, so that they can, um, shut off dispensers as well. The, um, all of the, all of the dispensers have sumps underneath them to collect, collect any minor spills, um, and as well as the U S T tanks themselves, those are dual-walled, uh, double-walled fiberglass tanks and do have, uh, a sum under them as well. Just trying, trying to consolidate this a little bit. Uh, there are overfill preventions, uh, so that when the fuel tanker comes on site, uh, he can't overfill this, the tanks, um, as well as fill and vapor spill prevention as well. Uh, the other thing is there's, uh, monitoring wells that have to be installed at the corners of the tanks that are observed, just to make sure that everything is clean on the sites as well. So that's just a brief description of the safety features of the fueling system. If you have any questions, Tom and I are here to answer anything that you, you have. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to start with the board first.
Uh, good question. Uh, you prefer to the line system for the fuel area runoff? Uh, where does that actually go? It says contained and stored, and it can't be used to infiltrate into the ground. So is it hauled off-site?
It, it's not hauled off-site, so eventually it does, um, it is slowly outlet through, after it's treated. So what happens is it goes through the mechanical first defense units, what oil-water separator tanks where it can contain it, and then it goes to aligned bio-retention area. So the bio-retention area has filter media that it has to go through, and then, um, at the bottom, there's stone and, um, under drains. So, uh, the under drains collect the water and then would outlet it onto a, a vegetated area. So it does go to a vegetated area, but however, it has several different ways of collecting the oil with the catch basins with the oil-water separator snouts, the, um, the tanks and the bio-retention area itself before it would ever get to an area that could potentially go into the groundwater.
And that's, and I, just to clarify, that's just for surface water, not for gasoline spills. A gasoline spill that would be reportable beyond anything above five gallons or anything that made it off any of these positive limiting barriers would happen, be reported to D E S and have to be mitigated with fire department, environmental spill contractor. So we're not talking about that product getting to the system.
And when you're stripping tanks, where do you put the water, water, uh, stripping tanks, when you take the water out of the bottom of the tank that collects, um, where does that go?
You mean water from the bottom of the underground storage tanks, like internally?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, it's a pretty rare occurrence, because as you probably all know, we have ten percent ethanol in all the product today. And as a result, you just like, you put dry gas into your car, those ethanol molecules get around the water. No water really accumulates in the bottom of the tanks unless a lid was left off or a tanker brought it in by accident. And the internal probe system has identified water to us immediately. So anytime, and the, just like the submersible pump in your well, it's off the bottom. And so, uh, any water that might accumulate in the bottom, we can see it automatically through electronic detection, and we have contractors from the harvest and others who come in and suck that water up, and it's disposed of with the off-site, through an environmental contractor.
Thank you.
I do have to say, I have dealt with clean harbor on one of the sites, not on Tom's sites, but another older site, and they have said the best thing that we can do for our systems is install those oil-water separator snouts that are inside the catch basins, and he recommends them for any site, because that is our first offense, and that one, that usually catches the majority of all, um, of any spill that would happen on the site before detection. Mr. President.
Um, are you planning to put a set of lights in, or what, what, are you going to relight the, the jug handle area there?
So, the off-site improvements, um, have, we're working with, um, D O T and the, it's in coordination with the development that's, we have to cross the street down the street.
It's a little bit off, yes, topic, but that's, the, the other development, two sixty-six, one twenty-five had made a lot of arrangements.
Right, so that hasn't been finalized, and that's why I didn't bring the traffic engineer here, because he shouldn't have much to report at this time, because it's still being worked out.
So one of the issues we have is that, unlike the planning board, we don't have an engineer that's going to review the catch basins and all the, but that is part of the separation systems and stuff. So I would presume we're going to vote on whether this is permissible, um, but then you would still have to have the engineer, because otherwise we have.
Everything would go right through the planning board.
Right, and they would still evaluate and use the engineer. The other way we could do it is have the engineer come here and review your plans and things like that. It, I, I don't know how you feel about that, but, um...
I guess I have faith that the planning board is going to do the right thing and make sure that all those bells and whistles and dots and Ts are in place.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that you're comfortable with that, because it does get us figured out, and we can do it here.
I understand, and that's not to say that we don't want to participate in some of those discussions or a technical review or whatever that goes on from here. But even if we grant, if this board grants a special exception for the gas fueling station, that's conditional on we take, uh, sort of permitting and meeting all the other regulations of the town of Kingston, which is all Department of Environmental Services. So this is just opens the door to give the client, the applicant, an opportunity to develop that property with this type of, of product. Now, if they don't pass all the permitting process or they, it, it won't happen, regardless of whether or not we grant a special exception.
That was going to be my question, is that if we did, by granting this, they would still need to go through all the technical components.
Absolutely.
Right, that's, that was, reason I brought this up is that you understand that, but a lot of people think, oh, I've got permission to put it in, and nobody can, you know, they can review it, but they, they can't keep us from doing it, so just wanted to let you know there's another.
Yeah, we'll have to go for a New Hampshire D O T driveway permit, we'll have to go. And, um, they look at the drainage, they look at the drainage. Uh, New Hampshire D E S alteration terrain will look at the drainage as well as the town's air review engineer for the planning of the site plan process.
There's still a long road ahead of you.
Do you know anything about the soil stratton underneath, and what kind of soils and permeability and things like that?
So up front of the site, it has, is all hydrological group A, but we do have some B in there, which was surprising, I thought it was all going to be A, but we do have a, a B group there based on our test bus, and we did set specific soils mapping.
And do you know how far, um, as the profile is, you are from Little River, which runs across one twenty-five to north of you, and then runs south towards your property?
Yeah, and they were more than two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet. I know Kingston Crossing's property, their rear property is within it, their shoreline, two hundred and fifty feet from Little River, is within that property, um, but it does not hit this property. It's close.
What I'm getting, you're going to have a couple of developments on this property. It's not.
Yes, it's not the only one.
It's not the only one.
This is different, this is just the.
The retail, yes, the retail in back of you or beyond you will be the one that fall into the shoreline protection issues.
Right, and that'll be separate.
Separately.
And your septic system isn't going to be used by any of the surrounding development?
I'm sorry.
Your, your septic system isn't going to be used by the, uh, the bank, the parks, the stores, the other stores that are going to be put into Kingston Crossing?
No, it's, it's going to be privately.
So, so that there's no chance of that system ever having to go beyond, beyond the twenty-four hundred gallons per?
Correct, it would just be this lot.
Thank you.
I may have missed it. I know you mentioned a potential driveway. Did you mention that your entrance drive has been approved?
It has not. Um, we're going through the New Hampshire D O T driveway permit process, but in, in order to apply for that, uh, the off-site improvements are being worked on with the other development, and we're providing a little bit of, um...
You're lucky that they were first, right? Just saying.
But in order to do, uh, put that application into D O T, we need to have a full site plan set and drainage report in order to submit. So, um, this is kind of our first step to know if we should do that.
All right, one other subject to you, sir. Do you have another installation of this nature in the surrounding area that we could just drive by and look at?
Um, you know, we, uh, just a little bit of us, I'm a New Hampshire company, my office is eleven in New Hampshire, I have retail facilities in New Hampshire, Vermont, Maine, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and, um, the renders that you see up there is what we are eventually going to propose be here, and, you know, this one is probably going to be called the farm, since we all know the property used to be a farm. So we try to make every location specific to the area that we're in, not, not some cookie cutter, um, type of operation we really want, where folks in the area are smiling. Not the gas stations are about to pocket those landfills, we're just in front of them, but we still need them, and they're appealing to locals, so, uh, we just opened a facility in Keene, New Hampshire, that's in the downtown area, that is surrounded by all the old factory buildings, and we built a, something that looks like a factory building that's comparable to that. So, uh, we have a similar to this in Randolph, Long, it's out off the interstate in the middle of farm fields, and it looks like barn. So you're, you're going to find, if you go look at my facilities, you're going to find that we try to customize them to love the water, which we'd like to do here as well.
Thank you.
And I've actually seen the one in Randolph, I didn't know it was yours, but I have friends there, so I've been in Randolph.
Oh, I guess, well, all that's interesting, the traffic and the, and the aesthetics and everything is, is, we should probably stick just to.
Right.
Issue of gas pumps, that's the only thing.
But, but I'm along.
Oh, I know. But I'm curious.
Exactly, I, I told again, this is, this is the doors here.
But they, I mean, I'm prepared to answer some of those.
I know, I know. Other questions from the board before I open it up to the party? And if the board has more questions after the board speaks, you'll have an opportunity again, but I've shut everybody off. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in support of this project? Start with the positors first. If someone would like to speak in opposition to this project, and I ask you one at a time, and that you come and sit at the end of this side table, because we have a microphone across, and please identify yourself and your address, so who would like to come and speak in person? Yeah, and right over here, would you? I don't know your name, I'm sorry, so, but I will shortly. You might sit over here at the right, and then we'll get you on the microphone.
I do have a question to ask.
You're welcome to sit down.
I'm actually representing my dad right now.
Yep.
And he has a letter that he would like to pass out, and a note saying in order that he can use FaceTime, he's unavailable in downtown right now.
Is he, he's the one, so.
I hope so.
Yeah.
If he can use here, I could, I could.
Put your voice on.
I'm actually, I'm reading this stuff.
You haven't identified yourself, or your.
Sorry, I can't see it out here. I actually live on Hubert Lane between my father and Lee, and they have a lot of concerns about the pollution that is going to occur, because it only takes one gallon of petroleum to take care of four million gallons of clean water. So there is going to be accidents, there is going to be pollution, and you know it around it. Your drainage systems are going to freeze up, they're going to clog up, the cars are going to be moving in, and it is going to leak. I've driven the block for so many years, I've been in the fueling thing forever. I have talked to D O T, and it does take a little bit for them to have to cop. It doesn't take a big major catastrophe, it needs a little bit. The Kedda is not going to take care of it, and then you have to store the drive that you put on. You're also looking at wildlife in there, the state of New Hampshire has birds that are on, watching there. And you have lights and traffic that are not going to be affecting my father's property. There's going to be a sign, there's going to be trucks in and out, there's going to be more activity, but the main concern right now is the water. It is going to get contaminated, there's no way around it. You can put all the things you want in place, but we all know they break down. You vaccines all the time, and we're just afraid that's going to happen. I'm actually finished, because I just want the rest of this.
So you have a letter you want to submit to us?
I have a letter and permission to speak for my father.
Yes.
And he can do whatever he wants on the microphone.
She, she reads the letter, or have him?
It would, you know, don't go away yet, no, no, don't go away yet. I, I think you should read your father's letter, because we're not going to really hear it from the computer, to be honest with you, I mean, I'm sorry he's not here, but it's, I, I want the audience to hear it, and the only thing that's going to happen is if you read that letter. We'll want a copy for our folder also. And we'll get, yeah, the applicant a copy, should be sorted out.
Why would you like me to speak?
Is that?
Is that him?
Yes, that's, that is he.
That's pretty good.
All right, if you can read it, go ahead.
All right.
State your number again, please.
I trust that you've all got a copy of my presentation?
No, yeah, no.
It's coming around here, um.
We're just passing out.
Time to go.
I'll give you, I can give you a chance to just preview it if you'd like, or I can start reading it.
You're going to read the whole letter? I'm asking.
Pardon me?
Are you planning to read the whole letter?
It's three pages.
I was, well, I, based on the amount of time it was just given, I thought I would.
Excuse me? I, yeah, you know, it's three pages, Kyle. Okay, go ahead, you can start reading the letter.
Okay, Summit Distributing LLC is requesting a variance from complying with all provisions of our aquifer protection ordinance, so they can construct a retail gas station within the protected and restricted area. As an abutting property owner and longtime Kingston resident, I could talk all the well-known negatives associated with constructing gas station or community like crime, increased traffic, decreased property values. However, since Summit is only requesting a variance from having to protect our groundwater, I'm going to focus on this specific topic. After reading a study performed in Rockingham County, New Hampshire, the Department of Environmental, Department of the Environment has this to say, given the likelihood that underground storage tanks, systems will release gasoline constituents and possibilities that spill fuel will be carried off the fueling area by stormwater, municipal officials interested in providing the highest possible level of protection for groundwater used by drink or drinking water should consider restricting the sighting of gas sta, the sitting of gas stations, excuse me. If the municipality zoning ordinance prohibits the location of certain high-risk land use in wellhead protection area, aquifer protection areas or other areas of high-value groundwater, gas stations should be considered for exclusion in the list of prohibited land use. We did this. Kingston adopted two oh one aquifer protection ordinance in, in eighty-nine, and was, and has amended it on several occasions to continue providing our community with the highest levels of protection for our health and our groundwater from risk sources of contamination. No, now Summit is asking us to rule against our own protection. The primary purpose of the aquifer protection ordinance is clearly stated in section two oh one. The town of Kingston hereby adopts an aquifer protection district and accompanying regulations in order to protect, preserve, and maintain potential groundwater supplies. The objectives of the aquifer protection districts are, and I won't. The objectives of the aquifer protection districts are, and I won't read them all, but just go to B, to prevent development and land use practices that would contaminate or reduce the recharge of identified aquifers. The ordinance specifically prohibits gas stations from being constructed in the aquifer protection zone unless a special exemption from the board that imposes additional protections for groundwater. The exemption is to add more protection on the industry, not grant a variance to eliminate them completely. The special exemptions criteria also states the proposed use will not detrimentally affect the quality of the groundwater contained in the aquifer by directly contributing to pollutions or increasing the long-term susceptibility of an aquifer to potential pollutants. A negative impact on gas stations on the environment has been exclusively studied. And, and gas stations use underground tanks to hold toxic material such as gasoline, oil, dangerous substances including benzene, kohlene, and heavy metals. These tanks are notorious for leaking. These, notoriously leaking these toxins into our underground tank can leak 400 gallons of fuel a year. One gallon of petroleum can contaminate 1 million gallons of water. That is worth repeating. One gallon of petroleum can contaminate 1 million gallons of water. And one pinprick-sized hole can leak 400 gallons of petroleum a year. Why should we go against the advice of the State Department of Environment of providing a variance to our own ordinance? We have known constructing a gas station here is bad decision since 89 when they, we've established this rule. If it was ever to be considered by a board, they were to include additional groundwater protection measures, not grant a waiver from them. How will this developer be protecting our drinking water source if they want to exempt, be exempt from the groundwater protection requirements? See, those daily dribbles and drops may not appear to be much, but a study estimated that a typical gas station, about 400 gallons being spilled over a 10-year period, including nearly two gallons of benzene. Now let's consider spills carried off the concrete by rain or snow. This clean water may flow over concrete and pick up the spilled gasoline. It could get into soil and end up in the water and surrounding wetlands, my wetlands. The purpose site is primarily freshwater wetlands. If Summit has no interest in taking measures to protect our groundwater in the beginning of their project, how can we trust them to do so during their daily operations and maintenance? Summit Distributing won't be drinking this contaminated water, we will be. Once it's contaminated, it is lost, it is lost to us forever. There isn't enough money to clean it up and the history of their industry shows they won't. It's this board's responsibility to enforce this ordinance, which has been established to protect the health of Kingston's residents as well as our environment. There's no way our community can consider a special exemption variance because it is well documented that gas stations make aquifers susceptible to pollutants. Granting a variance is not acting in the best interest of protecting the health of our residents and environment. It will start a precedence to allow other high-polluting industries into our community. If we don't say no now, it'll only get more difficult to stop this development from moving forward. We have the power to stop it now and do the right thing for our residents and our community. Let's not put Summit Distributing's profits above our own health and safety. Let them find another site which won't put us and our groundwater at risk. I respectfully request the board follow the advice of the New Hampshire Department of Environment, our own ordinance, and learn from other town mistakes. And tonight Summit Distributing gave variance request to build a gas station. Thank you for listening.
So can we have your name, please? I still don't know who you are.
My name's Louis Kent.
Louis Kent, I know you.
9 Bluebird Lane, Kingston, New Hampshire. I'm an abutter of this, of this so-called warrant. I'm a director abutter.
Thank you, Mr. Kent.
Thank you. Thanks to the board, too.
Okay. Did you want to add anything else you need? Okay. And would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this project?
I have a question.
Sure. Could you come up so we can? Hold on a minute, Carl.
I'm Karen, I was also an abutter, I have six little quirk road. Um, my question was, most of this was based on what I have said was based on hydrological study that was done last year. Is that true? Sorry. Some of the design, what I, what I read was that was done, based on hydrological study that was done last year. My concern around that being that it was a significant drought here last year. And so my question is, are the efficacy of that study, does it really represent the runoff and the hydrology that we normally have that are based on that study?
So the, what has been done is a site-specific mapping, which dictates by soils, not by water elevation. Well, it does dictate by water elevations to the hydrological roots of the soils. Even if it's in a, that was done last month? Uh, it wasn't done, it wasn't done here ago. Uh, even if it was during, during drought, we can determine water tables by estimated seasonal high water tables, which are like marking indicators of the soil. So whether it's a drought or significant rain, it's been happening, that stuff is still, still valid.
So then it's sort of based on anything from last year? And then secondly, can we talk about runoff? And then again, I apologize, this is the right place to ask a question. Do you guys, when we talk about soil removal and runoff, would you guys be going with a brine solution? Or are we going to be using like a rock salt solution? Or is this way too early to be discussing that solution?
That's a good question. Um, I think it would be a planning one-level question.
Correct, yeah. We won't be determining that here. That's, that will be part of the process for that.
Okay, because then with the, with the, we have your answer.
We use.
The details, the devil will be in the details and that goes all through.
Yeah, I think this, being an abutter, if you have a farmer's daughter, having, you know, a grasshopper and whatnot, runoff is a significant concern.
Yes, yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Karen. Carl, would you like to speak, please, before?
I'm Carl, I'm Kingston resident. I'm actually surprised to sort of notice in the paper. It seemed like a gas station was the last thing we allowed variance for in the aquifer protection. Wait, what do you want me to say? We should address people. People, right? So that kind of surprised me, that's why I'm here, you know, against that.
Yeah, and it's, it is right in the ordinance and that it says that a gas station would have to get a special exception.
Right, so anyway, you know, there's something in the, you go four miles south, four miles north, then you go to gas station. This is nothing, you know, that we're providing on those stats. And if you go to the Beesville Island at the Shell Station in Kingston, there's all kinds of bees and fuel all over the place. So it's, it's not a bee situation, you know, that's on a gas station. And also there's a lot of traffic issues. I don't know, that's another, some here, that's a big bird, just to put another gas station and reach out about this on 125. Because if you put it on that, it's, it's a very dangerous, scary bird. And those are about three things, if I don't have a three-page letter, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Carl. Would anyone else like to speak? Either for or against, or?
For informational purposes.
For informational purposes. I know both applicants, both this one and the subsequent one were reviewed by the inspectors earlier today. Was there any feedback that needs to be conveyed to his board? And they may be, I, I've received nothing in writing, so. Sure, come on up.
Something I, my meeting, I went on Tucker Road on the north end of the town. Which is closer to the city than most of these people. Um, the traffic is a concern for me, only because that Marshall Road, 125, their section is already busy. So that's just something. But I have a very asking question. When you're building something like this and you're doing all these filters and it's the newest science and it's the best that people can come up with, I mean, I've heard enough. How do you keep it clean? 20 years from now, what's happening to that filter? Is it just all clogged up? Do they get fixed every five years? I mean, I know it's a big elaborate system, but where does it fail because it's quite tiny? With time.
Do you want to pay attention?
No, 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 go ahead.
So that's partially the reason why we are proposing we have enough land to do the open drainage system. Um, personally, I like them better because she can tell right away if you have a problem with them. If, if there is a spill, then if the material clean hardware has to come out, that material in the bioretention area has to be dug up, disposed of before it enters the state and replaced right now. If there's, if it's just cloud of sediment, you're gonna know because you're gonna see water pounding out. And at that point, you know that the material has to be replaced.
So how much of that is still sedated on? And when you've got, I'm not sure, because we can't do it right here, just for your information.
Okay.
When you've got filtering systems that are, you know, like a little pond, is that what you're talking about? The areas of rainwater holes and stuff like that? How much of that actually filters down through? Because if there's a minuscule amount of gas and stuff in it, that either gather, you know, is natural. It is going to end up down along any of the water Kingston has. We're very lucky with our water system hanging out a little bit, getting a little bit screwed up. So how does all the systems work?
So that gets to the, I'll go this way too, so hopefully my voice will carry a little bit more. I know the acoustics, I'm having trouble hearing it too, the acoustics.
The acoustics in here are terrible. We know that, yeah.
So a drop of water hits the pavement, it goes into the catch basins. The catch basins have these things that are called oil-water separators now. They look like, I don't know, half gallon, not even half gallon, they look like a... I'm a visual person. So on the side of the wall, it kind of looks like an arc on the, on the catch basin. So what would happen, what happens is that arc prevents any oil from going into the outlet. Uh, all your floatables will remain up above. Your water actually goes underneath that snout to go into the outlet. So that contains, that contains your first minimal spills. Next it goes into, actually before that, if there's a spill at the fuel dispenser areas, we have the concrete house limited areas, which are the concrete roofs around each dispenser. So that's your first. Next is your concrete, your snout in your catch basins. After that, it goes to an oil-water separator tank or a first defense unit, which is a hydrogenated oil-water separator, sediment separator system. But basically that, again, has floatable storage, oil, gas, oil storage on the top and sediment storage down below. So that's your third level of kind of containment before it even goes into your open drainage. Then it goes into your open drainage with the bioretention area. And the bioretention area, what it is, is it's, um, bark mulch is the top. You typically pour conservation mix, seed mix. Underneath that is the filter media. It's usually 18 to 24 inches of filter media, which is a mixture of sand, organic matter, so that you have your harbingers to separate out any ooze. Uh, and, uh, sand organics and, and some, some sanding alone, just to keep the consistence, to keep the, um, water flow straight down. Uh, after that, so it goes through that media and then it goes through a stone layer after that where your under drains sit. So that's where the under drains collect the water from the bioretention area and out, and out and out to a ventilated area. So it has many levels to go through before you actually will see it.
Okay. But if the oil on this stuff is on the top, it's getting chuffed, going out towards the base. What happens to it over time?
The, the oil over time, like these catch basins, if it's just a film, they'll remain in catch basins. Just, it will stay there until the catch basin is maintained, is vacuumed out.
And it gets vacuumed out? Perfect.
Thank you, Mary.
And if I could just add a couple of things to kind of address a couple of things. I think a lot of towns like Kingston instituted water protect, aquifer protection zones very rudely, you know, in the 80s and 90s because of the conditions existed with older underground storage tank systems. I happen to sit on and have for the last 25 years, the Oil Fund Protection Board that the New Hampshire DPS manages that cleans up all these problems from many years past. And the technology that we explain, that implemented today, the New Hampshire DPS has found a route to allow these systems to be built in the regions around water aquifers because they provide so much more protection. The caller, the letter that was read into, would, if it was 1989 or 1998, I'd totally agree with you. But today with the way the protection systems are built, along with the stormwater collection systems that are provided, there's several levels of defense where it's in a different scenario. I can tell you that on the Oil Fund Protection Board, we're almost out of the job because we're starting to see so many fewer incidents because of all the new systems that have been put into place. And then a minute later, you, you should have to know that New Hampshire is one of the toughest states in the country when it comes to managing that and the rules and regulations that they have around new installations. So if we're talking about new technologies and what we have today, what's required by New Hampshire, you can, I, I happen to live in a small town that's on a water protection zone. They had a load of gas station that failed and went through a lot of those same concerns. So I share people's concerns about it and bear it respectfully because I know if it's a problem, it comes back to my board, it's a deal.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mary. Any other comments from the public? And we revert back to the board and advocates. Did you want to respond to anything else at this point before we continue?
You know, just terminology as well, I understand we're not requesting a variance, especially.
Special exception, that is correct.
Written into the record, I just want to make sure that's clear.
That is, that's exactly what we will be voting on. Other questions from the board, my colleagues?
On the letter and in our ordinance, it does say that the, that we require a special exception from the ZBIA that imposes additional protections for groundwater. So, um, we have to establish what those additional protections that we're required to impose are or have a conditional, if it was going to be approval, conditional approval that would allow the town engineer and maybe the planning board stage, that additional protections may be required at the planning stage. Uh, because it's quite frankly, none of us are engineers, that's you, how are you? But none of the people on this side of the U are engineers and we really aren't capable of deciding what protections need to be placed. You know, what the Title 42 protections are, what the DES protections are and everything else. So, um, I, I think that would have to be, and I think, I don't know procedurally if that's all right, but that the additional protections would be as required by the planning board.
Yes, and I think we can do that. I think I'd be comfortable.
With a condition?
Allowing the planning board, again, they're more familiar with those types of protections that are necessary.
They, they, we may not be more familiar, but the engineer.
The engineers.
And the, and the experts, you know, stand on people like that that can testify to it.
I think, I, I don't mind going that route to the planning board, especially given that. to the planning board, especially given that the square footage is like eleven hundred versus the twenty-four hundred.
Oh, the cubic feet.
The cubic feet, yeah. So that makes me more comfortable that we're not as toxic as we could be.
Yeah, and that's just a subject.
Yeah, I know, but that's important.
Really, I think in this condition, because it's talking about gas stations in particular, that additional protections for groundwater are required. They're talking about gas, MBTE and stuff like that.
Hey, you've done, I don't know, quite a few test pits on that site. Is that correct? I mean, you've been testing water sites in there a couple of years, I would bet.
Yeah, well, GPI personally has done test pits for both drainage and septic already on that site. We do need to get additional test pits. We know what we're gonna find. We're gonna find some sand. But we do need to do additional test pits to get witnessed by Michael Maumal with our CCDA.
But really, as you point out, the septic is half of what the apartment is, so it's not, that's not really...
It's pretty, right?
It's the spill, this is spillage.
I, I would bet that the little, the little tuber here next door is really the wrong one. And we're gonna get, we know, the sand. The sand, it's been there a lot of years. Anything else from the board? I'm assuming you're getting ready to review the criteria?
Yes, if, if, if you're at that stage, yeah.
Did you want to add? I, I, I think we are at that stage. I just wanna give the applicant a number. We're gonna vote. Would you like to add anything else at this time?
At this time.
Okay. And I'm gonna go straight out of the regulation and we're gonna read the five criteria and I'm gonna ask or show anyone if one, A, A, A. And Chuck, you ultimately won't be devotedness unless you really want to, and then I'll step back. It's up to you. Again, you only need the five of us. You all ready? Okay. Item one, proposed use will not detrimentally affect the quality of the groundwater contained in the aquifer by directly contributing to pollution or be increasing the long-term susceptibility of the aquifer to potent, potential pollutants. Agree or disagree?
I'm, I'm pointing out susceptibility is the key issue there and I think that would be where this, the condition would be by. I, I, I would vote for that if, as long as the condition that, that...
For the testing?
For, no, not testing, but review by engineer, qualified engineers is...
By county?
By, by, yeah. Further review and restrictions may be imposed by the board.
By qualified people other than us?
Yeah, well, exactly.
Well, yeah, Dennis Squitell is definitely...
Yeah, that's, I mean, I don't understand by name who the qualified experts are, but...
Right, well, he may be one of them, right?
Yeah.
A condition, I wanna get the wording in that, Peter, so...
Yeah, I...
Because I gotta send them a letter.
Right, yes, so... With the condition that the, the, the project may be subject to additional prescriptions to ensure the quality of groundwater.
Just hope I can read my mind, but let's go for it. Uh, conditional, I see. Project may be subject to additional restrictions to ensure the quality of the groundwater.
Correct.
Okay, all, uh, those that agree with item one, please raise your hands.
As with the condition.
With the condition? Okay, uh, anyone disagree? Abstaining?
I repeat it again.
Okay, I like to do, are you in favor? Do you believe that the, item number one, the proposed use will not detrimentally affect the quality of the groundwater contained in the aquifer by directly contributing to pollution or be increasing the long-term susceptibility of the aquifer to potential pollutants? And we have added, the project may be subject to additional restrictions to ensure the quality of the groundwater.
I think it'll be, it'll be, it'll be fine with the wording.
Sister Jerry, may I add something? You may wanna add to that by the planning board and their third-party reviewer. Just so you know where...
Specifically, yeah, not, Joe Schloss is not gonna come in.
Thank you.
I want this restriction, yeah. Thank you.
You never know, I used to be an editor. It's been a while since I've been tired.
And boy, do I need an editor, yeah.
Right now, I do. Okay, so then it was unanimous, yes, and we all agreed. Item number two, the proposed use will not cause a significant reduction in the long-term volume of water contained in the aquifer or in the storage capacity of the aquifer. Agree or disagree? Those that agree, please raise your hand.
Agreed.
Okay, unanimous. Number three, the proposed use complies with all other applicable sections of the article. Agree or disagree? All those that agree? Yes, okay, unanimous again. Number four, a hydrogeologic study shall be submitted for uses whose septic system is designed for more than twenty-four hundred gallons per day. In Zone A, a study shall be submitted for any septic system designed for more than two thousand gallons per day.
And I would say that is not required because of the septic system being rated for twelve, at eleven hundred and twenty-five gallons.
So we could still say agree or disagree?
Great, yeah, so...
So all those that agree with item four, please raise your hand. Okay, unanimous again. And number five, the zoning board of justice may require that the applicant provide data or reports prepared by a qualified hydrogeologist to assess any potential damage to the aquifer that may result from the proposal, proposed use. The zoning board of justice shall engage such professional assistance as it requires to adequately evaluate such reports and to evaluate in general the, the proposed use in light of the above criteria. I think we kind of agreed to that by the conditional...
Condition, you, you could say that, that, um, refer to item one, that the planning board, that the ZBA may defer that to the planning board for hydrogeologic review, hydrogeologic review. That's one of the things that they may require at the planning board.
They may need, the planning board may definitely require that.
They, they, don't know, can't speak for them.
Right. Neither do I, neither can I.
Okay, so, but, but we, we could say that...
I'm gonna say refer to item number one for the potential need for hydrogeological study.
Great, that's perfect.
So I'm getting better at it, why don't I use my meditative skills?
Yeah. Be writing a paper next.
I could be doing that, too.
Yeah.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, all five criteria passed.
Oh, we didn't note on that, did we? The first one.
All right, good. All in agreement with that, please raise your hand. Item five, it's unanimous again. So all five criteria passed, they all passed unanimously. And so I entertain a motion granting a special exception to Article Two-O-One, Section fourteen, fourteen.
Okay, so I will move that we grant a special exception under...
Article Two-O-One.
Two-O-One, four...
E fourteen.
H, yeah, the, um, E fourteen do the Two-O-One, four, H, uh, criteria with the condition and as stated, with the condition that the project may be subject to additional restrictions to ensure the quality of groundwater through the planning board and third-party reviewers to include possible hydrogeologic.
Can't believe we let you tell us what we're saying.
Okay, third-party review. I, I can give it to you.
I'll clean it up, don't worry, it's okay.
To include possible...
Oh, God, love it.
Hydrogeologic, uh, study.
I'll give it to you.
That's that way it comes.
Thank you. Can we have, can we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Larry. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries. A special exception to begin your process of locating a fueling station in duct tanks and so forth is begun. Anyways, conditional and any other restrictions that may apply to protect the groundwater to the best of your ability and our ability. I'm sure, as you said, you understand that. Thank two-sixty-six-one-twenty-five for the lights that we need now on that intersection. By the way, that's already been determined that whether you come or not or whether the other company comes or not, we still need lights at junction Marshall Road at one-twenty-five. Okay, um, thank you very much. I'll be getting a call in the day or week to notify you and get in there. Nice meeting you both. Okay. Item next. I don't think so. Give them a second, Dave. What's that?
This one, kind of hard to ask.
Like, is it even a grab before he goes? He didn't have anything to say about it.
Sorry, I'll leave out the first question. I'm a zone bell trying to read something.
It's okay, there was so much to go, I, I understand that.
Just trying to make something, thank you. Stop on that.
We've never done one of these before, so it, it...
All right, well, that's fine, but I just was trying to...
Yeah, I mean, I have a special exceptions, but it doesn't fall into the standard here at all. Oh, Zach and Brad, it is, that's a tough one, I had it. But it's different for here. Um, okay, I guess we're ready to start the next hearing. Uh, this is Benevento, Vituini's Products, nine-hundred Salm Street, Williams, in Mass, regarding One Road, Stone Drive, Kingston, Tax Map R three Y eighteen. This is a public hearing where the applicant seeks a variance to the terms of Article one-oh-seven, Section one-oh-seven, one-six of the Town of Kingston zoning ordinance and asks that terms be waived to permit the height of a pollution-controlled duct up to eighty-eight feet, where existing duct work is sixty-one feet. And the ordinance limits the maximum height to thirty-five feet. Okay, uh, hold on. Kevin, could you shut that door? Because I can still hear them out there. Thank you. Gentlemen, please identify yourselves.
I was only Michael Terry, Attorney for Benevento. Gordon Schneider, Operations Manager for Benevento.
Okay, and you have permission for the order?
Yes, that should be in act.
In the back, yes, it was, yeah.
So, so the owner of the property has authorized the lesser, which is Benevento. We are the applicant. We're just here for a height variance. Uh, as you have noticed made clear, there is currently an asphalt plant on the site. The asphalt plant, which is currently on the site, uh, was originally constructed in nineteen sixty-five. It was moved to Kingston in nineteen ninety-five. It has been there for the past twenty-six years. Uh, but it, of course, has nineteen sixty-five technology. Uh, one of the most important parts of the asphalt plant is to make sure, um, that you have a adequate pollution-controlled duct in order to make sure things don't escape that bad. Um, and under current, um, technology in order to be the efficient, environmentally friendly, meet all the regulations, uh, you can't have an asphalt plant with a pollution-controlled duct at thirty-five feet. It just can't happen. So we're here for a variance in order to have a new plant up to twenty-twenty-one standards. It will meet or exceed all of the DES regulations that are applicable to an asphalt plant. Um, the one thing that it's not going to meet and it can't meet, which is why we're here for a variance, it is the height limit of the Kingston zoning ordinance, which is at thirty-five feet. Uh, so, uh, the criteria for granting a variance, as I'm sure you all are well aware, uh, I think are pretty easily met in this case because the, uh, you know, the public interest of where something like an asphalt plant should be, this is as good a location as it can be. There's currently an asphalt plant there. This is replacing an older one with a newer one. And it's in the industrial zone where industrial uses such as this belong. Uh, the intent of the ordinance is that the thirty-five-foot limit in many towns is intended for buildings intended in order to make sure that things are not visible and harmful, uh, you know, to your residential neighbor right next door. Again, we're in the industrial district. Uh, this particular pollution-controlled duct is not going to be visible from far away. It might be visible from the immediately adjacent property, which is an industrial use. Uh, but it is not going to be visible and therefore it's not going to be having any effect on property values. There's already a plant there, nineteen sixty-five-built plant, having a brand-new plant up to current standards. Uh, if it would have any effect, it would increase values. Uh, and finally, the literal enforcement results in necessary hardship because it's just not possible to build an asphalt plant with a thirty-five-foot pollution-controlled duct that would create a fire hazard. Uh, it's also something that the state would never approve due to, well, that fire hazard and other problems, which is why we're here requesting a variance. If the board had any particular questions, we would be happy to answer them. Either specific detailed questions, which Mr. Schneider wouldn't be able to answer. I don't pretend to be an expert on the exact science of how asphalt gets recycled and all of that, but I'm sure Mr. Schneider could probably know if that's boring you to death with all those details.
Questions from the board?
Um, it's sixty-five right now, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's going to eighty...
Eighty.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. And so what's the difference? What's the, what else is in that stack? In terms of covers or whatever?
No, it, it just has to do with the, it has to be able to free-fall back into the baghouse. And it gets that, the steam expansion, it all starts with the rap entry goes into the hot aggregates. And when that moist recycled asphalt hits those hot aggregates, a steam explosion occurs. And that's what goes up this pipe. And it gets dry, it becomes mushed in there, but it's earned. But it has to be at such an angle so any VOCs and any fugitives in that steam, because it's not just steam, it has VOCs, obviously, the fugitive's in it, can grab it back into the baghouse and be recycled through the baghouse's filtration system back into the manufacturing process. So it's actually just a factor grabbing because it's moisture and it has fugitives and it just cakes up unless it can free-fall back down.
Are you required to do this, though?
You have to be able to, yes, we're, this, this plant and what we have now proposing, we're more akin to the California technologies, which are stricter than the DES technologies. You have to be able to take care of that expansion of steam You have to be able to take care of that expansion of steam, because it's such an instantaneous flash, you're putting aggregate, or, excuse me, you're putting recycled asphalt and the temperature on the four-hundred-degree aggregates, and that's an instantaneous flash over the steam, so the diameter and the length and the free-fall of that ductwork is crucial to evacuate that steam.
So you're in trouble now?
Oh, no, no, we have, right now, it's functioning on the old plant, but it will not function at that high on the new plant.
So we push...
Nineteen sixty-five...
Okay, that's, that's, I guess, that's my point, I didn't know you were replacing the whole plant.
Pardon me?
You're replacing the entire plant.
Yes, it's, it's, the plant was built in nineteen sixty-five, it's...
It's been there...
It's seen its time.
Can I just, I should, like, the whole thing you're replacing?
So we, all that plant you have there?
Yeah.
Okay, the first stage is existing?
Okay.
Okay, the second stage is what will be there?
Okay, so replacing the whole thing, the whole plant, like, what, what are you saying?
Essentially, the whole thing, there's a small portion that will remain, but for the most part, yes.
So I guess what you were saying, Ellie, was kind of where, what was going to be my question, what led up to this, was there an occurrence, did something happen? Did something occur? Is there a safety thing?
No, there is no safety thing, it's simply the fact that the technologies have changed, and this plant is seen its time.
Okay.
So for you to continue to function, you really need to upgrade the facility?
Pardon me?
You really need to upgrade the facility?
Oh, absolutely, it's functioning, it functions today, it's all, it's working tomorrow, there's no concerns for safety, it's purely a technologically advanced...
Quite an investment.
Absolutely.
Was that, was the original, the, the height bar is thirty-five feet, but when it was built, was it built with the sixty-one foot, I, I mean...
So from what we can tell, it was put in with sixty-one feet in nineteen ninety-five. It was actually put in, in Rhode Island, I believe, and it was moved to Kingston in nineteen ninety-five, so...
So when, when you, oh, first of all, operated the thirty-five feet was an issue, you might have had to commit to, I don't even know, that was...
In sixty-five, there was no zoning ordinance.
But ninety-five?
So in ninety-five, we have the site plan approval records, um, there is no evidence, um, that there was any, um, application to the zoning board, and I'm not sure what happened in nineteen ninety-five, we had spoken with Mr. Greenwood, Glenn Greenwood, and then sought to see where that happened in nineteen ninety-five, we have the site plan approval, um, but nothing from the zoning board, and you were the town president.
Okay, so, yeah, so...
So we look back at the, the ordinance was thirty-five feet, and it just went in at sixty-something feet, it's been like that since nineteen ninety-five, and so now...
The problem that confused me was that, that we have a little bit of difficulty defining structure in some of the ordinances, and not defined in other places, but, uh...
No, I, I don't think, I don't think this one falls into the confusion, but I think you just got done in ninety-five, so...
It's with my face!
It's not even gone yet.
Okay, okay, yeah.
It's not even gone, it's done now.
Yeah, it's, it's...
So now we have a sixty-five-foot, uh, duct that needs to be replaced, and it's going to be, they were asking to replace it with an eighty-eight-foot height in the duct board, which is more efficient, safer, and all that other good stuff.
And I'm guessing we have reflected here, or actually, you were here, the...
I wasn't here since...
Were you at the, at the inspector's meeting, or did you...
I have information.
Okay, okay, we're good, gets the information about the fire.
When we open it up to the public, we will.
Okay.
I promise you that, I was like, you guys ask questions first. But Mr. St. James, you're welcome to come forward and join us at the table and add some information for our enlightenment.
I stepped outside without him, because I don't want to get a line for maybe noise and...
I did that the right way.
He asked me to inform the stretch to do that, um, the inspector's meeting was part of the proposed addition to the smoke stack, and the fire department has no issue with it, and what they would do is, um, they would have, if there was a problem, they would have a classile come, automatic neutralize, we can save a hundred-foot power, and obviously, if I can feed it to us, it's only going to be eighty-eight, so, and I...
And you're also the closest, closer, yeah, um, that was, that was the only question I had, was, because this is obviously, this is a written, uh, height restriction, the actual ordinance says thirty-five feet or two and a half stories, so you, you could tell, this is, has to do with ladders and, and our block thereof, and so that was my only issue, was finding out if the fire department's okay, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken.
I'll go back to the...
We can stay up here, it's okay, we're, we're friendly, Friday.
How come, when is this, what's the plan for when to...
If this were to be granted, we would start construction next November, the, the manufacturing and the times for just all kinds of equipment are, are under the six months, so we would order it in immediacy with hope of having all of the on-site ground next November.
Sitting in a container ship out of Long Beach.
These are actually coming from, uh, they're, they're lead times, they're already in the next...
Just don't have garage, big overhead garage, yours?
No.
Because they just, with the new fire hose, they're going to hold it up, they just are in the front, ready to order, they order the doors, and then they don't have, they don't know when they're going to have it, so, it is an issue.
They're not buying a ladder truck this year, Tony, I mean, so it's not even a question now, they're not even...
Next year.
Yeah, that's not going to happen next year, either.
You're going to buy a new one from next year.
You can buy one from the guy in the corner of Hunt Road, he always seems to have one over there.
That's a good point.
No kidding, okay, I'm sorry, we digress, we're getting punchy here, we're not used to meeting.
Do you want to use this one or this one?
Is it the same one?
It's probably, it's just, I think this is your newer form here.
Okay, would you gentlemen like to add anything else before we take up the, uh, decision?
Yeah, I know, I've been for her, they couldn't have...
And the board has, okay, the board has no more questions?
No, it's, it's all...
Okay, we're not again.
When they set it up to California standards, there's no other state that does that.
Oh, yeah, you're right, no kidding, uh...
Okay, so this is a variance...
For fifty-three feet.
Uh, well, just specifically to allow a smoke stack of eighty-eight feet.
So were we writing up a petition for...
A variance to the zoning ordinance to permit a smoke stack...
A pollution-controlled, it's actually...
A pollution-controlled duct, yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, you're right, otherwise the stuff wouldn't come back down, yeah.
Controlled duct of eighty-eight feet.
Okay, oh, do you want to...
Which is the fifty-three...
Do you want to go for ninety-nine feet, just in case it comes out of the box?
Um, yes, okay.
Or you actually requested eighty-eight, so I guess we should...
You should stay with the eighty-eight, because that's in your application.
That's in your...
Okay, that's fine.
You made me feel so...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's properly looking, tax map R three, light eighteen, and it's a one-road stone drive.
An article one oh seven, section one oh seven, point six.
What's the, at one-road stone?
One-road stone, yep. And it's article one oh seven point six. Okay, after reviewing the petition of the, and after hearing all the evidence and by taking into account consideration of personal knowledge of the property in question, the Kingston Board of Adjustment has determined the following: Will there be a diminution in value of surrounding properties as a result of granting this variance?
Give me a second. No.
Right, what's about it, Peter?
Oh, yeah, this is number four, on the, on the newer form that came in the package, the, uh, application for a variance, oh, okay, so I, I'll do that one.
Do you just, do you mean this?
Okay.
That was for some...
What's that?
Yeah, I'll do that one.
Yeah, we, we do have new forms, we'll have to still get some of the old ones, it's better, you see here, okay. Number two, will granting this variance be benefit to the public interest, yes or no? Number three, will literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance result in an unnecessary hardship? Yes or no? Will substantial justice be done if this variance is granted? Yes or no, and will the use contemplated by the petitioner as a result of obtaining this variance be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance, yes or no? Next month, I'll pay strictly to the neutral ones, how's that sound? I don't confuse any...
Just like school, they can't...
Hmm?
Just like school.
Fashion, make the school.
Okay, so then...
What do you do to it?
It's one oh seven point six, it's a pollution-controlled duct of eighty-eight feet.
Pollution-controlled duct.
Yeah, turning for a pollution-controlled duct.
An eighty-eight-foot pollution-controlled duct, whereas the rates be quite good by, thus result in a fifty-three-foot variance.
This is ten...
Fourteen.
Okay.
Fourteen. You are aware that you have to technically wait thirty days, make sure no appeals are decided, and, uh, and you have that static construction for Benito, but you get a lot of permitting to go through anyways.
So this question is, um, do you need to go to the planning board for this, because it's not a change of use, but is it a change of the site plan?
Would we already been, um, to the planning board and where this is a, um, site plan, uh, amendment?
Amendment, yes, absolutely.
Site plan. Uh, there's specific permission when you're not introducing the use of a plan...
Right, same use and, and no larger, no expansion.
Yes, thank you, we're thinking the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, I remember, yeah, yeah. Probably want to, yeah, to go through.
All five criteria pass unanimously, so, okay, have a motion, please.
Uh, a move that, um, the exception to article one oh seven point six...
But the variance...
Sorry, the variance be granted, um, to article one oh seven point six, to allow a pollution-controlled duct of eighty-eight feet, uh, where maximum structure height is thirty-five feet.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Open it. I have it, the variance is granted, you'll have a letter out within the week, probably by Monday, so you have the beginning of next week, so, see you in a while, good luck, thank you for updating the plant, it's good for all of us.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other business you can be for us, gentlemen and ladies? And the meeting is adjourned at eight forty-two, yep? Okay, and we can say goodnight to our viewing audience.